Thank you. Ask the clerk to call the rule, please. Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Leopard.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Present.
Councilmember Reisner.
Here.
Councilmember Spar.
Here.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
With the record show, all seven members of council are present. Minutes from November 7th, regular and committee of the whole meetings, as well as November 14th, special council meeting were distributed. Does anyone have any questions, deletions, corrections? Okay, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reisner.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long community planning, Councilmember Leopard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and labor relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and public property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And economic development and downtown planning, Councilmember Spar.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee of the whole, does anyone see the need for a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, seeing none, we are now under reports of officers. Your Honor, Mayor Don Yanantuno.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we get going this evening, Chief Chapel has a special presentation. If Chief Chapel would come up, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Don and Council President Boyle, for the time this evening. Wanted to bring to your attention an event that happened Sunday, early Sunday, the 13th day of November. Each fall leading up to this, we do training with the resident advisors from Tiffin University, training them in what we call our Campus Fire Safety Program. It's evolved a lot over the years from starting off as just fire extinguisher training, and we would use a little fog machine. They kind of use theatrical smoke to smoke up a hallway and practice a fire drill essentially with the RAs. From that, we've grown into a more formal type presentation that we go through and discuss a lot of the different aspects of things to cover, what we refer to as nuisance alarms. So the burnt food in the microwaves, the steam from the shower, hairspray under the smoke detectors, all those little things that normally wouldn't associate with something that causes a fire alarm, yet does. And we respond to numerous calls like that at both our university campuses. And while it's good building familiarity for us to learn the systems and meet some of the students, it's not really why we want to go there. So we incorporate that into this training. With the grant that we received several years ago from Firehouse Subs, we were able to buy a new, fully electronic fire extinguisher training system that has an LED screen on it that portrays the fire, and then the fancy extinguisher that shoots lasers at that screen to then train everybody on how to use a fire extinguisher to extinguish, or use a fire extinguisher to extinguish the fire. And each of the RAs, when they complete that training, they get to go through and go hands-on with that. And it times it, so it becomes a competition and becomes a lot more fun for them, to see how fast they can put out that fire. So we do that training. We hope that they never have to use a lot of it, but it's still hopefully a layer of protection. And so we come to November 13th at about 3:45 in the morning, and the second floor of freely hall, many of them are awoken to the sound of people yelling "fire". There was a fire in one of the dorm rooms where either a suitcase or perhaps the comforter on the bed was, it came in contact for a prolonged amount of time with electric baseboard heater and caused a fire to occur on the bed. The occupant of that room woke up when she felt her legs and feet starting to get hot and discovered that the fire was going on. She, of course, left the room and was uninjured. And as the yelling ensued, and then eventually the fire alarm system activated, the residents began to evacuate. Well, one of the RAs that was working on that floor, staying on that floor, was in that training that we did this last fall. And I believe, if I'm correct, had no overall prior experience using fire extinguishers or anything of that nature. And as she was exiting the building, she noticed the extinguisher in the hallway. She retrieved that, went back to the room, and was able to, for the most part, fully extinguish that fire. While our response time was only four minutes, we still were responding a little shorthanded. Station two was out on an EMS call on the north end of the city. So Station one with the six personnel there were our first-in companies. Not exactly the number of people that you'd want to start a fire off at a dorm, considering the number of people that may be still inside that building, the size of the building. But knowing that the fire had been put out, as we were told by our dispatch, while we were still on the way there, that kind of helped to lower a little bit of the anxiety that might go along with it. And yeah, so basically, a riot found some smoke, got that cleaned up, got the rest of the fire extinguished, and some of the other materials from the room taken out of there. And it was really a situation that could have been much, much worse. With even an additional four minutes, that fire could have grown to be much, much larger. And instead of just causing damage to a partial dorm room, it may have involved out into the hallway. And rather than the students being relocated for just that one night, it may have been several days or even weeks that they may have had to relocate, if not for the quick actions of Hope Love, who was the RA that did that work. So with your permission, I would like to present on behalf of the Tiffin Fire Rescue Division, to Hope, if she'd like to come up, our Distinguished Citizen Award in honor of her outstanding and invaluable service to the citizens of Tiffin and fellow students from Tiffin University. Thank you all very much.
Now, thank you, Chief, and thank you for sharing that wonderful story with us. And thank you, Hope, for job well done. Next on the schedule, Erin Monch, CEO of TSEP, is here this evening with a very exciting announcement that I've been having a really hard time keeping to myself, but I have done so.
Well, thank you, Madam President, or Madam Mayor. I really appreciate that. I'm still on that old roll, you know, here. You know, it's been five and a half months now in this position, and it's exciting that I'm able to come here and make an announcement to City Council. We didn't think even this morning that we were going to be able to get this one, all of the ink to dry on the paper in time for the council meeting tonight. But we're able to, so I'm able to come here and tell you a little bit about CRAs, which is kind of the boring piece of this. And I'm also able to talk to you and actually tell you what the business is now, when in reality, we didn't think 24 hours ago that we'd be able to do that. So before you, you do have a CRA application. I will be addressing the council committee of Councilman Leopard next week on this topic. But I figured you all should have a little bit of background on this in case you're unable to attend that meeting, what a CRA is. Because many of you have not been through this process before. We have several CRAs in the city of Tiffin. This one is CRA number five that we're looking at. It already exists. It's in place. We put it in place several years ago. Essentially, that allows businesses in that area to make improvements to their property and ask for an abatement on some or all of the future new value generated from the property taxes. So in reality, all existing property taxes continue to be paid, as is. What this will do is, the applicant decides what figure they are asking to be abated on the new value. So if you're going to place, if you're going to make a renovation, or for example, we've had places where you have empty lots available, and they build on it, it locks in that current property tax rate for a period of time. They can essentially ask for one to 15 years for the abatement. They can ask for 1% to 100% for an abatement. Anything over, or excuse me, anything 50% or greater requires the approval also of the local school board, which I will also be meeting with immediately after the long community planning meeting. I will be before the school board next week at 6 o'clock, doing this same drill with them. So this applicant is going into the Tiffin Mall, 100% contingent on the approval of this CRA agreement. They will be locating a 60,000-foot retail store, which we all know how much we need retail in this community. It's been one of my goals ever since taking over at the partnership. 60,000-square-foot retail store that will essentially occupy all of the space from where Planet Fitness ends today through the old JCPenney. So everything eastward to Kroger from Planet Fitness on. They're planning to invest $4 million into the property, create 60 full-time jobs and an additional 20 part-time jobs. The ask, I think, is quite reasonable. They're asking for a five-year abatement. If you recall, they could have gone anywhere from one to 15 years. They're asking for a five-year abatement for 50% of the newly created property taxes. So they, to me, it is quite reasonable. The city of Tiffin, Tiffin City Schools, Vanguard Sentinel, Mental Health Recovery Services Board, the Opportunity Center, the others who are on, that receive property tax revenue will still receive every penny that they receive today. And they will receive 50% of this new value over the next five years. And then in year six, they will receive the full 100% value. I'm pleased to announce the store that is locating here, contingent upon you and school board approval of the CRA, is Hobby Lobby. We're very excited for them to come to the community. I think it will be a great addition. They fill a real niche market here in the Tiffin community. And I think it's going to go over very well here in the Tiffin community. So if you're excited, I guess that's an early Christmas or Black Friday present for everyone. And if you're not, we'll probably still see you there shopping at some point. I'm guessing so. So, but I'm excited to bring this to City Council in my hopes that you all are willing to approve this agreement here in the near future. In your packets, you will see a planned schedule. I know when I was in a previous position, I really liked to know schedules and timetables so we didn't get behind. You have laid out there what myself and the folks with Hobby Lobby in the Tiffin Mall have agreed to as a timetable. We can edit it a bit if necessary, but we would love to stay on schedule with that, just like City Administrator Thornton's hoping that the Buckeyes stay on schedule on first down, second down, and third down over the coming, this coming Saturday in the big game. So, Madam President, that does conclude my report. But if you have any questions, or council members do, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any more big questions from there?
Cool. Thank you. I'm just quite excited I could now talk to my sister about it. I have to drag her out of there. We've even paged her, so she would be quite thrilled that that's here.
It's not fun in that role, is it? Because I hate when you have secrets that you have to keep sometimes for multiple months, Mayor.
It's been a month at least.
It eats you alive at times, because you know that there are so many people who really would like to hear the news. So you can, if you need to take a five-minute break, I bet they'll give you one to go text everybody now, quick. But thank you, and I will see all of you, most of you, on Monday at the committee meeting, and happy Thanksgiving to all of you.
Well, thank you for bringing them to Tiffin. Yes. Very exciting. Moving on with all my things here, sorry. Madam President, I have many. I have one proclamation this evening. Robert Putnam is celebrating his 100th birthday this week on the 24th Thanksgiving. And Dale and I will be heading out to the Willows to celebrate with him tomorrow, while Nick covers land bank for me tomorrow. And so I want to share his proclamation that I'll be giving to him tomorrow. Whereas Robert Bob Putnam was born in Cary, Ohio on November 24th, 1922, and whereas Bob served in the US Army in World War II as a PFC from March 1943 to December 1945, he was a rifleman, message runner, and radio operator in Company L, 7th Infantry Regiment, 3rd Division, and served in Africa, Italy, France, and Germany. And whereas he was twice wounded in France and was awarded several medals, including the Arrowhead Victory Medal, four Battle Stars, and two Purple Hearts with Oak Leaf Clusters. And whereas Bob retired after driving transport tankers for more than 40 years for Standard Oil of Ohio and BP, and whereas Bob was proud to have his military banner displayed on Monroe Street in Tiffin, which now hangs on the wall in his room at the Willows. And whereas Bob will be celebrating his 100th birthday with his family on Thursday, Thanksgiving Day, November 24th, at the Willows of Tiffin. Therefore, it be resolved, I, Don M. Yanantuno, Mayor of the city of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim November 22nd, 2022, in the city of Tiffin, as Bob Putnam Day on this 22nd day of November in the year of our Lord, 2022. And so I'll be reading that for him tomorrow on his special day at the Willows. And so I just thought that was a neat story and wanted to share that with all of you. Also tonight, we welcome Ryan Punyon from TMEC to give us an update on how things are going with the recently formed Tiffin Municipal Arts Council.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello, Council. Like Mayor Don said, my name is Ryan Punyon. I was the chair for the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission in the first year of operation. I think we got a slideshow that should pop up here shortly. Will that pop up in here, Nick?
It's coming.
Okay.
I have some technical issues, sorry.
Okay, so the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission was created this year. It was 2022. Our budget for the year was $10,000. And we had two monthly meetings established throughout the month, and also did a monthly interview with WTTF to keep the community updated on any changes or expressing for the community to bring ideas to us, as that was a big part of the first part of the year, was really figuring out what direction we want to take this group. You guys didn't give us a handbook in January, so we had to come up with that handbook. And I think all seven members of the board did an exponential job staying with the commission and really focusing on what the community needs. I think we can go to the next one there. So Mayor Monch appointed seven commissioners to run the Arts Commission. Then we can go to the next one. Sorry. Wish I had a clicker here. As I said, myself was elected as the chair. We also had two co-vice chairs, Matthew Kennedy and Chelsea Mullins. Shannon Bowman was elected the secretary, and Nick Consolo was elected treasurer. Like I said, really, the first beginning of the year was figuring out what direction. And given the $10,000 budget, we knew we wouldn't be able to afford a big mural or a sculpture, as those are substantially more cost-concerned with those projects. So first off, we talked about painting or decorating fire hydrants, which quickly got shut down from the water company as a safety concern. Next up brought up was the traffic control boxes, which is a project that we went forward with this year. And Nick is having trouble with the PowerPoint, but I will continue on because I memorized everything. So we went along with the traffic control boxes. Each box was printed locally here by MLAD, and the cost was $250 per box. And we asked for submissions over three phases from local artists and students. Our first two phases were focused in the general downtown area at the traffic boxes. Our last stage, which was just recently put up, focused around the schools, including the city schools and the private schools, along with both colleges. In total, we had 18 of these boxes wrapped this year. Also, each artist that was chosen with their artwork was awarded $100 from the Arts Commission. Also, another thing that we created this year was the Creative Citizens Award, which was given to Mary Lewis during our first walk. And we plan to continue doing this throughout the years of really shining the spotlight on individuals that just do a substantial job on, you know, their love for the community and the arts. What are we on here? Okay, so with the traffic control box, the Ohio Arts Council was able to grant us a small percentage towards art boxes, which it was brought up during our Ohio Art Council meeting as I watched a Zoom meeting, and it was in discussion of our grant. It did hurt us substantially, being entity under the city of Tiffin. If we were our own entity, we would have probably got that full grant that we were looking for for this project. The reason they look at it that way is because we are a city trying to function as an art commission where the majority of cities separate the two. Not saying we don't work closely together, but with this first year being established, it was totally made sense to work directly with the city to establish something new as the Arts Commission. So some of the takeaways and challenges of the Arts Commission this year. The takeaway is definitely, we had, during the third Thursdays, we ran three artist markets on Court Street. And this was free for artists to set up. We had anywhere from 20 to 30 artists set up each Thursday that we did that. And the big takeaway I got from this was, I was personally set up as an artist at all three events. I set up next to school kids that finally got the opportunity to share their drawings, their creations with the public. And that was, that was the moment when I seen it. Like, you can really see the difference where before, at least when I was growing up, I didn't get to go sell art on Court Street. And now giving those opportunities, not only our school kids, but also to adults that are interested in artwork. The traffic control box, once just a plain piece of metal, now is a beautiful piece of artwork. Very cost-effective. Over the year, we expect that these 18 boxes that we put up this year will get reevaluated every year, and we will determine if they need replaced or if they can stay that way. We assume if everything's okay, boxes will stay out for approximately three years. And originally with our budget of 10,000, we were thinking to keep 10% of our budget back for maintenance of projects as we develop them throughout the years. As we found out, as we got closer to the end of this year, our funds don't transfer over to our next budget. So that's another, one of those things, you know, it's one of those challenges where we're going to need funding to keep up with artwork that we have out. So in prediction, if we do this for three years, that fourth year, we're not going to have enough money to go back and fix what we've done. So it's important that we now think of securing funding for the Arts Commission. It's been a big year for us, but we have more in store for the future as we focus on Frost Parkway and the River Wall, looking for murals and sculptures, a way to create and keep Tiffin a destination and make it more of the college community for them to embrace what we have downtown, along with our own community members. I gave before you guys the Toledo Arts Commission art program. Some of you have it. I ran out of nice paper today at the shop, so some of you may have it. The important person I would like to have, this is definitely Brett Howard. I have been mentioned in this, and numerous people, including the mayor, over the past year. So the Toledo Arts Commission was created in 1959 and fostered the Toledo Heritage of the Arts. An organization is the longest-standing arts commission in Ohio. And since 1977, they stepped away from their boundaries with the city, creating their own arts commission and becoming their own entity, and proposing the Toledo 1% for Art Program. The information that I have highlighted in your package goes over the simplicity of this program and how we can use the capital project funding that is annually given to the city in return for the 1% for Art Program. Sorry, I was stuttering there, but it's a big deal with this 1%. And I don't know how we need to bring this up to commission or to the council, if a council member needs to present this or if the mayor needs to bring this. I would highly consider 2023, we make Tiffin the 1% for Art Program happen. Is there any questions?
Sure. Yep.
Yes.
I have one. I haven't been to any of your meetings, so that's my fault, I guess. And I'm still thinking TAC. Was the M added as a branding, or what's...
Yep, Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission.
It was TAC, correct?
That, I don't think so.
I think you might be confusing the Tiffin Art Guild tag.
Yes, tag. Tiffin Art Guild. And if there's no questions, like I said, please review that information and go about it among yourself, I guess.
Anyone?
Good.
You do love the electrical boxes, though.
Yes. It was a great return on our investment, for sure. All right? Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Let me look here. I would say, Councilmember Wilkins, do you want to take that for your committee? Thank you. Thank you.
Go for it.
Okay, we are finishing up the budget presentations tonight. So Tiffin Fire and Police Department chiefs are here with us. And so, gentlemen, I'll start it out by saying, for both departments, we've worked very hard with our new contracts to get our new hires and salaries up to be competitive so that they're able to keep their new hires. We are also, they have reductions in overtime, clothing allowance, and operations. And so a reduction in overtime is a big deal also. And Chief Pauli then removed from his budget, he was, he did have in there a police dog, and he has removed that from his budget as things tightened up, because it costs more than just the purchase of the dog. You also have the handler cost, the training, outfitting the vehicle for that. And so it's still a hope of ours to bring a police dog back, but not at this time, possibly. And so to look at, let's start with Chief Pauli. He actually has three sections. Police department at 220, clerks 221, and dispatchers at 223. And that's on pages 17, 19, and 20 of the 75. And so Chief Pauli is here, if you have any questions. And so Chief Pauli is here if you have any questions.
Does anyone have questions for the chief? I'm looking.
Awesome.
Councilmember Thacker.
I do have one question, so this is line item regarding mental health. It looks like in the past there was $6,000 spent. You're spending zero. Is that something to do with actual evaluations post an event or is that more like preventative care or what, what does that line item for? It's on page 18, under Police Department. The line is 101-220-5341.
So 5301, I don't have listed here, so what that tells me.
5341?
5341, excuse me, okay.
Well, it looks like actual expenses were zero and then it was budgeted in there and then taken back out.
Correct. It was in there at one point in time. We were looking at pursuing mental health check-ins for all the employees. The Human Resources Department and Director has taken on that part of the form. It still came out of mine.
Okay, that helps me, thanks.
Any other questions for Chief Pauli? Yes, Councilmember Perry.
We're just out of like curiosity, when like the need for a police dog, just how often do you think that would come into use for you guys? And, you know, obviously looking to the future now, but just.
Yeah, it's a valuable tool for a police department. It's also a great PR tool, frankly, for a police department and for a city. So it has a multiple kind of value there. It is just a, an expense on a budget. It is a, it's a tough thing on a budget. It's initially a tough thing on a budget, I should say it that way. Initially, getting it started up and running is an expense by the time you do equipment, you know, get your vehicle set up, training for the dog, purchasing the dog. Beyond that, it becomes substantially less in the, in the $3,000, $4,000 range to be budgeted to maintain vet and food and in some of the training that goes along with it going forward. So the cost benefit beyond the first year is doable. It is really just getting over that first hump. And so, yeah, it's just something that is, is a goal of mine to bring back to the Tiffin Police Department. It doesn't have to be next year, but it's gonna be at some point in time, I'd like to bring it back.
When was the last time that we've had one?
Yeah, I think it's been five years or better since we've had a K-9 unit.
When we retired the last K-9, it was 2017. And Chief and I have talked about this, we'd like to put the pieces in place this year to be prepared to bring a dog on in next year's budget. One of the things that has to be identified is which police officer wants to be that handler and getting that handler the training they need as well. So we've agreed this year to work on those pieces of getting those important parts in place and then try to budget for a K-9 to become on board next year. We may need some help from the community for that, but I understand that there has been help in the past and that we might be able to look to the community for the procurement of a dog and its training.
Councilmember Thacker.
How long typically, once you take on a dog, I know we're saying the initial expenses is some of the biggest part of it, but how long does a dog typically work on the force with you all?
So a dog on average is about five to eight years, depending on how hard it's worked and the type of dog that, that you would be pursuing. So it just kind of depends on each dog.
Any other questions for Chief Pauli?
And I know you said it's a great PR issue, but I've always said that I love having the dog because it protects our men. Because some of the situations, especially as things keep escalating, it's really important to have that dog baby going in first. And so I look at it that way to keep them safe.
Good point, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, no questions, but I did have an update that I wanted to call everybody's attention to on page 48. In, this is in Fund 331 in the police area, which we made some changes and I missed getting them into the budget, so I want to make sure that you know about them. Line number 331-220-5723 is Police Department equipment. There should be $16,000 in there and I'm just putting that in. And then Police Vehicles right underneath that, that 331-220-5724, that should be $75,000. We're looking to purchase a vehicle and also the SRT vehicle. And I think Chief had told you that the SRT vehicle we're purchasing with ARPA funds, we had that all ready to go. And then the lead time and everything has cost, the cost has increased. So we're adding to this area so that we can make that purchase next year.
Questions? Councilmember Perry.
I know, you know, a few years ago, they started going the direction of, you know, trucks instead of the SUVs. Has that been, have you been working out as well as, as we'd hoped?
It has been, so there, there's, it kind of is a two-way street. So the vehicles, the trucks are great for, you know, they're nice, they're big, you can load things in it. About half the department likes the trucks and about half the department does not. One of the things that, that is a kind of a downside of the truck is if you have to do a quick maneuver in the downtown area, the truck is not the vehicle for that. And so the next vehicle that we are looking at is an Explorer. It's a little easier to move around and get around. And so going forward, the vehicles that we would be, will likely be, you know, smaller SUV or, or smaller vehicles. The problem is frankly, we can't get small vehicles. We can't get a Charger, which is what the folks really like to drive. Chargers aren't making them for police packages anymore. And I think eventually they're not even gonna have them available to, to the public. And so unfortunately, we'll be searching and continue to search, but the trucks are a great asset. About half the department really enjoys them and they do, they bring value to the department in a bunch of different ways. But for the other half of the department, I'd like to find some smaller vehicles.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Pauli. Chief Chapel, as I mentioned, we've worked very hard on our negotiations to get you more competitive for your new hires and to keep your new hires. And he is, his pages are located on, starting on page 20.
You can go to Chief Chapel.
You want to go through the changes?
Highlights or all the changes?
Highlights.
Highlights, please.
Highlights.
I was expecting that answer, I think.
Completely asked.
Yeah, so really, a lot of the budget is relatively similar to what we've used in years past. Fortunately, that does make it a little bit easier in its preparation on my side of things. In the 5600 grouping on page 22, our, where'd it go? Our protective clothing line, 101-230-5626, protective clothing. We did have a slight increase in that. That would be all of our turnout gear and associated items, helmets, boots, gloves, nomex hoods, et cetera, that we wear into fires. As you can imagine, like anything else since 2020, has just been increasing in price exponentially. And while we're not anticipating a need to buy a lot of sets of turnout gear next year, this should allow for us to buy probably four to five sets. And if we do have any gear that is damaged or worn out from use, we do have that ability then. Or if the, if we have retirements and new people come in, then we'll have to also outfit them and may have to get them new gear. We've been able to use some of the gear that we've, we have accumulated. But NFPA standards say that a set of turnout gear must be replaced after 10 years of use. So we can't just keep it around forever. So that would be one notable increase there. Our vehicle parts, that one stayed the same. Where we get into vehicle maintenance, that one definitely had an increase there. That'd be back in the page before, page 21, 101-230-5443. We did an increase. Our initial budget for this year was $35,000, looking to increase that to $40,000. We've just had kind of a nightmarish year, for lack of better terminology, when it comes to our vehicle maintenance. Right now, actually, our Medic One, which is our newest ambulance, 2019 unit, it's sitting out at Tiffin Ford with no motor in it. Head gasket blew, the motor is shot. And it's been probably a month now it's been out there. They're still working on procuring a motor and a new exhaust system for it with no lead time for either of those components. The commissioners have been nice enough to allow for us to borrow one of their ambulance units that they're not using right now so that we still have three ambulances to serve this community with. But certainly the, the cost for the repairs helps that it's under warranty. It's just the timeline that's really the drain right now that we'd love to be able to get that unit back and put it in service once again. So we do know that we have a couple of repair items on our Engine One next year. That's gonna probably start the year off with about a $7,000 or $8,000 price tag. So that's again, part of the reason for that increase. We just, you never know for sure how things are gonna hold together and with the increase in the call volume, et cetera, et cetera. There's just more wear and tear going on to the vehicles than what we've had in the past. So that was a reason for the increase there. Our professional services, if I can find that one here real quick, there was an increase on that. That is what we've used in the past for paying our medical director. We did have a change in that from Dr. Fitzpatrick, who had served in that capacity for many, many years and done a great job this past year with his retirement from emergency medicine. He was no longer eligible to serve in that role. So instead, we partnered up with the Northwest Ohio EMS Consortium. This is an agency with a group of physicians based out of St. V's that provide their services for medical directions to approximately 80 departments throughout Northwest Ohio. Brings a lot of great uniformity to protocols that we utilize that sets our standards for practice in the field for both medical and trauma. We also allocated money into this line for the purposes of going out for RFQs from architectural design firms. We've been talking about it since the 1960s and it's about time, I think, we move forward with selecting an architect and we start looking seriously at the design of a new fire station. That process is going to take a long time. It's not going to be cheap. But what these architectural firms will be able to do is to take any emotional connection that one person may have, whether it's from my position as fire chief or anybody in the administration that says, I sure would like a fire station right here. The architectural firm's gonna be able to take a look at that, do an analysis of what call volumes are in that area, what the response times would be to serve the rest of the city. But in all reality, we're looking third ward, big time. Third ward right now comprises one-third of our call volume altogether with the growth that we see going out there. And now Hobby Lobby, we gotta make sure we protect that, right?
And it makes no difference, I live out there.
So, but no, we, the Station One has served us very, very well for many years. We've simply outgrown it. There's some structural issues with that building. There's some safety issues with that building. There's handicap accessibility issues with that building. It's time, very simply. So, yeah, we, we hope to get started with that process really next year. This is a multi, multi-year process and it's gonna take a lot of legwork from everyone. So consider that when it comes time to take out those petitions to run for reelection next year, I suppose. I think it's an exciting thing for our city and I really want to make sure that we do it right and certainly want to incorporate as much feedback as we can into that so that, like I said, it represents our community well. Moving through into some of the capital lines, really, I felt like I was kind of crossing out more stuff than I was adding. I was kind of nervous about doing that. I've always been told, you know, just leave it in there and find something to use the money for. But on page 48, the 5700 grouping, we zeroed out our fire station remodel budget. The past several years, the administration has allowed for us to reinvest into both of our stations and we've made some tremendous updates to, to both fire stations, making them look certainly much younger than what they are. And it's been a true blessing to have that. I thank the previous administration for their support in doing that. Our office furniture, we're gonna be fine with that for a while, so we were able to zero out that line. And then the fire equipment, we did have, I am requesting $32,000 in that. That'd be 331-230-5734, fire equipment, $32,000 for the purposes of buying a new striker power load cot system. This is what goes into the ambulances and it's literally a push button cot. If you've never had the opportunity to see that, you could have a patient on there, four or 500 pounds even, with the press of a button on the, on the end of the cot, it will raise and lower and then we're able to load that directly into the ambulance. There's no more manual lifting. This is something that we got our very first one and actually the one that we'd be looking to replace through a BWC grant years ago because it, it reduces the likelihood of back injuries from, from bending over and picking up the cot. So the manufacturer recommends that they are generally replaced after about 20 hours of use. And I figure this is also on a piece of equipment that I think it's about three or four seconds up and another three or four seconds down. So after 20 hours, it takes a little while to get there. Ours that we're looking to replace has about 80 hours on it. The sales guy was kind of impressed. He's like, you've never had an issue with this? Not yet, but thanks for bringing it up, you know? But they, they did recommend that it would probably be better to go ahead and look at replacing that. So that's what that request is for. Those were the highlights.
Yes, Councilmember Spohr.
Chief, are you looking into another BWC grant to replace this one?
Actually, as luck would have it, I was notified this morning that they did just open that program up again. However, replacing one cot system with another would not be eligible. As they refer to it, it's basically a neutral payoff there because you're already at that level of safety, you're not increasing it, you're just maintaining. And for that reason, they said they would not accept a request for that.
Okay.
But I did think of it. I wanted to.
Well, I know they were in my office recently telling me that they were waiting for that to open and I didn't know they opened it this morning, so that's good. Yeah, thank you. As far as your unit out at Reinecke, my cousin's in the crowd and he works for Reinecke as a mechanic, so we can ask him directly, hey, when you gonna get that done?
I'll work on it.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You notice what clothing?
I know, I'm trying, that's been a long fight, so. But yeah, just, I know we haven't had many people apply, so to see five new, you know, people come into the fire is awesome. Is that pretty much going to, I mean, for now, is that gonna be good? Do you see a need for more, you know, fire department later or just kind of wondering about that?
So where we're at right now with the hire of these five new firefighters, which again, these five, I think everybody I've spoken with on the crews, they're all very, very excited to have these, these people joining the department, very energetic, they're doing a great job. They just finished up their two-week probationary training period. Now they're on to shift. They started over the weekend and they're doing a fantastic job, off to a great start. We're very happy to have them. So that brings us up to 34 line firefighters and company officers. Ideally, we'd be at 36. We still have a pending since, oh, I don't know, I think February possibly. We still have a pending since, oh, I don't know, I think February possibly, safer grant request through FEMA, which is a staffing grant request to fund two positions. It would be a three-year grant. Basically, all expenses paid is the easiest way to describe it. So any wages, insurance, retirement pickup, any expenses that the city would occur for these two positions for three years would be 100% covered under this grant. It's about $620,000 that we're patiently, I think it was fair to say maybe, at this point, awaiting to hear from. If that grant is approved, then we would look to attempt to fill those two spots, bringing all three crews back to 12, which is really, that's considered our full staffing, essentially.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Leffler.
What is our next vehicle replacement in the fire department?
So the next vehicle that should be replaced is likely the 2005 Seagrave, which was one of the vehicles that put a pretty big hit on the budget this year for vehicle maintenance. The problem with that councilman is that generally, when we rotate the apparatus to more of a reserve status, like engine one that sits downtown right now, it's a 2016 KME engine. When engine two, which is the 2005, would be removed from service from our department, normally, we would take that KME, put it at station two, that's the reserve location, and then we would have a new engine come in. We don't have the space at station two to park the engine and the ambulance back-to-back, which is how they have to go in there because the ladder truck's on the other side of the station bay. There's simply no room to do that. So we don't have much of a choice. We're going to keep that engine as a reserve. We are allowed to keep it under a reserve status, under NFPA qualifications, for up to 25 years. So we're going to be getting close to that point. But, yeah, other than that, we do have a new ambulance that is ordered already. It was ordered with the ARPA funds at the beginning of this year. We're looking at a 24-month lead time for that vehicle. Funding for that was included in the 23 budget request in the event that the manufacturer is able to produce that vehicle earlier. But realistically, we're thinking probably January, February of '24.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Given those reports and concluding our budget presentations, would, is there a motion for the law director to prepare legislation for the 2023 budget approval? Councilman Sparr.
I move that the law director prepare that legislation.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second? Councilmember Perry.
I have a second, Madam President.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
If I could add, I would interpret that to also mean not only the budget ordinance, but then there are some related items of legislation that need to be approved. And the finance director's been working on those. They involve transfer of funds primarily to the right funds to, and this is required by law and by your auditor. So those will also be prepared as part of the budget ordinance. Then also, the annual pay ordinance is something that you typically consider, you've approved in the budget certain revenue or expenses for, for the pay for your non-union employees. And then also, it would appear that the union contracts may be ready for approval at the next meeting. So there will be ordinances for approval of the union agreements, all four of those. So those would, your budget is more than just one ordinance, there are multiple items.
Thank you. The intention would to be to have this read for the first time at the December 5th meeting. So we will need to schedule a special budget meeting, hopefully for December 19th, is my thinking for that, so. Or I'm sorry, the 12th, the 19th is the next regular meeting, the 12th, I'm sorry. Does anyone have an issue with 4:30 PM for that meeting, by the way? Danny, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, as long as it's.
It should be, I mean, that's, and it's the only, it's the only purpose of the meeting. Rather quick. You're good with 4:30, okay. All right, so I'll announce that. Any other discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, thank you. To finish out my report update on events, I attended the 24th Annual Celebrate Youth Luncheon sponsored by the Seneca County Family and Children First Council and the Tiffin Rotary Club. It was a great heartwarming event and 40 young people were honored. As Chief said, we welcomed five new firemen to our fire department family on November 16th. I added one more wedding for a total of five. I'm beating Chief Paulie back there, he's only still got one. I'm up to five. Nick and I attended TU and actually, Councilmember Wilkins was there also, TU's 31st International Flag Ceremony. They celebrated international students from 33 countries. Upcoming events in November, Seneca County Fair called Lights. Drive-through start in November 18th, going through to December 18th on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays only at 6:00 PM in the fairgrounds. It's a $5 donation. On Thanksgiving, November 24th, the annual Turkey Trot will take place at 8:00 AM at Hedges Boyer Park. Starting point is the embet shelter by the YMCA. Proceeds go to the YMCA Weekend Food Program and the Salvation Army. It is a three- or four-mile run, walk, or bike. City Hall offices will be closed on November 24th and 25th. November 26th, the Shop Small Business Saturday. December 2nd at 5:15 PM on the Courthouse lawn is the annual Christmas tree lighting to kick off the holiday season. The first annual Kris Kringle Market launches downtown that night and runs through Saturday. December 3rd is the annual Quanis Club of Tiffin Christmas Parade. I will be taking Josiah Hedges with me in the parade for his last trip. Later that day, I'll be ringing the Salvation Army bell with my husband at IGA for the Quanis Club of Seneca County. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? All right, thank you very much. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
Yes, I would like to report that I have on file in my office the forms of the tax lien agreement and cooperative agreement that are mentioned in ordinance 22-105.
The Riverfront probably. Roger. Is that everything? Awesome, thank you. Questions on that? Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the financial report for the month of October 2022. Total receipts for the month were $3,693,546.19. Total expenses for the month were $3,737.74. The general fund unencumbered balance is $5,585,585.98. The income tax receipts for October 2022 were $1,128,243.41. Total annual increase in income tax collections for October 2022 compared to October 2021 is $327,257.19. Year-to-date income tax receipts are up 15.09%. 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that were transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for October was $140,518.17. The unexpendable balance for all funds is $37,448,235.46, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions for the finance director? Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Not on what finance director just spoke about, but on some of the other pages that she shared with us ahead of time. Nothing's wrong, to my knowledge, but I just want the public to know we looked these over before the meeting. And one of them was a check to Central Ohio Farmers Co-op for $27,597. I'm just curious what that is, Central Ohio Farmers Co-op.
That's for our fuel consumption of our city vehicles.
Okay, and how about one more? I did notice three checks to TSEP were cashed in October. Is this for the entire year or do we still owe funds to TSEP?
Actually, that was for three different things. The first one, the $10,833.33, that's the normal monthly charge that TSEP sends us for economic development and marketing, which is what our contract with them is for. The second one for $30,000 is administrative services that they did for us on a community development block grant. And then the $20,754.49 was the city share for the snowflake project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Reese.
I can make a motion to accept the finance director's reports and October bank reconciliation.
There's a motion to approve the finance director's report and the bank reconciliation for the month of October. Is there a second, Councilmember Leffler?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Thank you. Wanted to report on the Tiffin Riverfront Development Project. It involves resolutions 22-34 and 22-35 and ordinances 22-104 through 107. A notice, ordinance 22-104 requires a notice to Tiffin City Schools and to Vanguard Sentinel Schools. It's required 14-day notice prior to consideration of that TIF ordinance. Thankfully, TSEP and Aaron Montz, he delivered that notice to the schools today. We received receipt, signed receipts by the schools, and the receipts are on file in the clerk's office. Also this evening, we have David Rogers with us. David Rogers, as you may recall, he's an attorney in the Columbus area. He represents the developer. He is here this evening to respond to any questions that you may have regarding legislation that is pending before you and also any questions you may have about the project and the progress of the project. So if the president would allow, if there are any questions or any statements from Ms. Rogers, you can ask them now.
Councilmember Perry.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to so much have a question as, if you have an update, that'd be awesome.
With respect to Tiffin Riverfront Development, they have now received a PACE term sheet from a capital provider to provide a PACE loan to them. That's property assessment energy. Of the many pieces of legislation you have that you're considering for second reading tonight, all of them except the TIF ordinance are about the PACE legislation. And that is being considered by them, the interest rates favorable. It involves capitalized interest and interest-only payments, lower payments for the first several years. It would be 20, 25 years, 50 semi-annual payments. And then I've been informed by my client that they expect to have a commitment letter from a senior lender that would be available for inspection by the city attorney on or before the December 5th meeting date. And so that's the basic update on the timing.
Any other questions for Mr. Rogers?
I know, obviously, you're not the developer, but just a lot of people in Tiffin would probably be curious about timeline on the actual building itself and the project itself. I mean, say, everything goes as planned. When can we expect to see, you know, ground broke? When can we expect to see a completed project? I don't know if you have any insight on that?
I don't have much insight. I just know it's at least a one-year construction process and you wouldn't expect to see groundbreaking until January of next year. So that's just a rough estimate.
Sure, okay, awesome.
Councilmember Leffler.
You anticipate sale of the property by the end of, by the end of 2022, then?
Yes, that's the current plan, is that the property would be sold from the current property owner to the Tiffin Riverfront Development LLC by the end of this year. Now, that's a prediction that I'm not going to promise to keep. And I know my client would not promise to keep it. What's happening is they're looking to the lenders to tell them that they're committed to go ahead and provide the funding sources that they would need. The balance of the purchase price at this point would probably come from TIF proceeds. So we'd have to see if that TIF gets done. But the TIF might be reimbursement for the, for the purchase price of the land. So it's a goal, but not necessarily a promise.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for your time, I appreciate you hanging out for the meeting.
No, happy to do so. I've been, when I was a young lad, I was a city attorney. But I was, I used the city council meetings and following the evenings. So thank you very much for your attention and all your hard work.
I have an opening.
An opening here soon.
You have to move here.
Too late, yeah, yeah. You had to move here prior, one year prior to the nomination, so. Sorry.
Thank you again.
And Mr. Rogers will also be in attendance at the meeting on December 5th.
Yes.
With more information at that time.
My expectation is that we'll have a lot more information. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can stay for the second readings if you'd like, but I know that's just a formality, so.
Unless there are any questions, I don't know that you need to stay. I know you need to get back, drive back to your home this evening, so drive carefully.
I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We are now under written communications.
Thank you, Madam President. We have mayor's request for legislation, number 22-43, CRA agreement with Suter Pearson Properties.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-43 will be assigned to the Long Community Planning Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-44, renewal farming lease.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-44 will be assigned to the Recreation and Public Property Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-45, reappointment to local income tax board of review, Gwen Reinhardt.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-45 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-46, reappointment to Fair Housing Board, Carol Hammer.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-46 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-47, reappointment to Park and Recreation Board, Susan Jones Boer.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-47 will be assigned to Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-48, reappointment to Architectural Board of Review, John Huss.
Mayor's request for legislation number 22-48 will be assigned to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
And then we have mayor's letters of appreciation to, one second, please. To Marcia Hampshire for her service on the Thomas Connor Memorial Commission. To David Young, also for his service on the Thomas Connor Memorial Commission. And to Jody Rheinbold for her service on the Architectural Board of Review. And then we have the revised exemptee to ordinance 22-104 that was mentioned prior.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct the questions to myself. Your big clear cow.
Where dare they go?
Okay, seeing none, we are now under motions. Are there any motions this evening? All right, seeing none, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
We have resolution number 22-34 introduced by John Spar, a resolution approving a petition, articles of incorporation, and initial plan for the city of Tiffin, Seneca County, Ohio, Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of resolution 22-34.
Resolution number 22-35, resolution, I'm sorry, introduced by John Spar, resolution declaring the necessity of acquiring and constructing certain public improvements in cooperation with the city of Tiffin, Seneca County, and the Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of resolution 22-35.
And under ordinances, we have ordinance number 22-94, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement and take all other actions necessary to acquire real property rights. to acquire real property rights from Heidelberg University to construct, use, and maintain a stormwater sewer along Rebecca Street.
This is the third reading of Ordinance 22-94, Councilmember Thacker.
Um, yes, I'd like to move for passage of Ordinance 22-94.
There's a motion for passage of Ordinance 22-94. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I, I move, I'd like to second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Leffler.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Thacker.
Yes.
And Wilkins.
Yes.
Ordinance 22-94 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance Number 22-97, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance establishing the rate of compensation for members of Tiffin City Council effective calendar year 2024, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 22-97.
Ordinance Number 22-98, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance establishing the rate of compensation for the Office of Mayor of the City of Tiffin for calendar year 2024 and thereafter, as required by city charter, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 22-98.
Ordinance Number 22-99, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance establishing the rate of compensation for the Office of Director of Law of the City of Tiffin for calendar year 2024 and thereafter, as required by city charter, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 22-99.
Ordinance Number 22-104, introduced by John Spar. An ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property located within the City of Tiffin to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements to be made that directly benefits such real property, authorizing the distribution of the applicable portion of those service payments to the Tiffin City School District and Vanguard Sentinel Career and Technology Centers, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 22-104.
Ordinance Number 22-105, introduced by John Spar. An ordinance authorizing the city's participation in financing special energy improvement projects, authorizing the execution of documents to effectuate such financing, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 22-105.
Ordinance Number 22-106, introduced by John Spar. An ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in cooperation with the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, and the Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 22-106.
Ordinance Number 22-107, introduced by John Spar. An ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in cooperation with the City of Tiffin, Seneca County, and the Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of Ordinance 22-107.
That concludes the ordinances.
Thank you. We are now under other business. At this time, I'd like to announce a special city council meeting for Monday, December 12th at 4:30 PM in council chambers to, for the reading of the budget ordinance, legislation, and any other business to come before council that evening. Sure, yes.
I'd like to announce a meeting for the Recreation and Public Property Committee regarding the request for Legislation 22-44, renewal of farming lease, and the TMAC 1% discussion, and any other business that should come before the committee. That'll be on Monday, November 28th at 4:30 in council chambers.
Councilmember Leffler.
Thank you. I'd like to announce a committee meeting of the Law and Community Planning Committee for the purpose of discussing a CRA agreement with Suter Pearson Properties, to be held Monday, 11/28, immediately following the 4:30 Recreation and Public Property Meeting.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before council this evening?
Any other business.
Oh.
Any other business may come before the meeting.
Mayor.
I would just like to comment that I keep getting asked about the pay raises, and so I want to just stress to the community, it is January 1st, 2024, when they take place, you cannot give yourself a raise. It has to be voted in. You cannot get it unless you're voted in. You can't give yourself a raise. And so I keep getting asked about this. I got it again yesterday at church. And so I just want to stress that everybody seated here will not get that raise unless they're voted back in, in 2024.
So you gave yourself a raise.
Don't say that.
That's how rumors start, Richard.
They think now.
Or what, in the offering plate?
Right. It's all tithing. Anything else to come before council this evening? Right, seeing nothing. I thank you, everyone, for your time this evening, and have a good night.